Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 5:03 PM. And we will start with a roll call. I'll start with myself. Alan Backus present. Go around the table.
Robin Alstam Stad present. Karen Lucio present.
Thank you, Karen.
Pro Kessel present. Becky Kek present.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, we will move into public comments. And I'll just read this out. The Parks and Recreation Commission invites the public to provide comments at this time. Members of the Parks and Recreation Commission may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. Persons interested in making comments on specific agenda item are asked to complete a brief form and submit it to the court or liaison. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to five minutes. And is there somebody on the Zoom call intending to speak?
Carol said she was not going to speak, and she's the only person present.
Okay, so no public comments. We will just move right into discussion items. Do you have any updates that you wanted to do before we move into that item?
Doing any updates this time because just in the with the consideration of time.
Okay.
And so we'll, we'll have that since we meet again in three weeks, we'll do the full chameau then.
Okay. All right. So then item four, her discussion only item, the Trails Master Plan. Taylor Broihill of Logan Simpson will provide a presentation of the progress made on the Trails Master Plan to date.
And I just, before Taylor gets started, I want to thank you all for enduring your homework. I know it was probably a little difficult and we got some good outcome from it and Taylor will share all of that, but please know that it was not the, the end all. We will have, be able to have a discussion today and make some changes if necessary. Whatever. So keeping in mind that our Trails Master Plan objectives are to guide and implement, provide, to create a guide and implementation tool for the development of the maintenance of trails in Clarkdale and to meet the recreational needs of the Clarkdale community. And I'm going to just go right ahead and hand it over to Taylor at this point because she's got all the goods.
Great. Thank you so much, Joni, and thank you, Chair. I will share my screen now and we'll get started. Okay, if you all can just confirm you're seeing the like full screen slide, maybe give me a verbal confirmation.
It's not full screen if that's what you're trying to do.
Are you, so you're seeing like the presentation view?
Yeah. Taylor, because of the echo, I'm gonna maybe recommend that you just speak a little more slowly so that if your words aren't stuck in the middle of the talk or of the others. I don't know what that meant, but you, you know what I mean? With the echo, I wish I could kind of fix it. Just go ahead.
Okay. So are you seeing the presentation view or the full screen slide?
It's not full screen. We're just seeing your little presentation view. It's small.
Okay. Just a moment, please. Okay, now are you seeing the full screen slide?
Yes, we can see it.
Great. Okay, thank you for your patience. I will do my best to speak slowly, not echo over myself. But just to quickly introduce myself, I haven't met many of you, I don't believe. But my name is Taylor Broihill. I'm an associate planner with Logan Simpson, planning and design, and I've been working with communities just like Clarkdale for a decade specializing in long range community planning for trails and outdoor recreation. So I really appreciate the opportunity to meet with you this evening to give you an update on what we're calling the Plan Connect Clarkdale, which is the town's Trails and Connectivity Plan. And so as Joni mentioned, we'll be discussing the preliminary routes and the prioritization results tonight. So I will begin with giving you just a brief overview of sort of the background of the project and bring you up to speed as to how we got to where we are tonight. So that will include highlighting our route identification process, introducing the proposed pathway and trail types. I'll give you an overview of the preliminary routes, which you had the chance to review over the past week. And then I will present the results of your project prioritization ranking before finishing with next steps for the project. So you all may recall that in 2020, the Parks and Recreation Department conducted a community survey and trail system, a community survey and trail system opportunities were the number one amenity that the community requested. And respondents to that survey requested trails of varying types, including connections to neighborhoods, connections to local recreation destinations and parks, businesses, schools, as well as neighboring communities and federal lands. So to build on that, a year later in 2021, the Clarkdale General Plan set the goal of providing linkages between those types of destinations I just mentioned, as well as open space, parks, and other destinations. And they, and the plan identified at least eight direct actions related to trail development. So developing this Trails and Connectivity Master Plan that we're doing right now is really that first step in accomplishing many of those actions from the general plan. So the purpose of this plan is fourfolded to engage the community to understand their desires, preferences, and vision for trails in Clarkdale, to document existing conditions and the current context for trail development. It's to identify agreed upon future trail routes. And then finally, to develop a framework for implementing those trails. And to achieve that purpose, we divided the planning process into eight tasks or phases. So we've completed tasks one and two over the past six months. That included data collection and analysis, as well as preliminary public engagement that some of you may have attended back in May. And the purpose of that was to understand the community's needs and preferences and identify opportunities. And we are now in task three, where we are focused on developing and refining preliminary alignment. So that's what we're doing right now. And then after we, after our meeting tonight, we will move forward with getting more input from the community. So we'll let the public review these draft alignments. And then we will move into plan development in which we'll flush out the recommendations, develop cost estimates, and perform other analyses related to maintenance, operations, and implementation. So leading up to the routes that you reviewed over the past week, our team considered tons and tons of GIS data, and this is a summary list of all of the inputs, including yeah, GIS data as well as static data of all the proposed conceptual, historic, and social trails that exist in, from previous planning processes or just ideas that have been present and discussed in the community over time. We met with, we've met with trail advocacy groups and partners, stakeholders from neighboring towns, public land managers, and again, we held an open house event in May with the community. So we've evaluated all of that data and these ideas through the lens of our professional observations on site visits by walking potential trails, conducting desktop analysis through GIS, and then also just relying on our knowledge of best practices and expertise in trail planning and design. So this is, these are sort of the inputs that we've considered as we developed the preliminary routes that we shared with you. So the way we summarized all of this was to identify and classify information as either an opportunity or a challenge. And in some cases, that piece of data was both. It was both an opportunity and a challenge, but this is essentially what guided that development of the preliminary routes map. But I think it's important to acknowledge that while we received lots and lots of input from our community partners, from area stakeholders, as well as the public, that not every single route or idea that was proposed made it onto the map that you, that you received last week. And we continue to be open to considering any and all potential trail alignments, but there are also some very strong determinants that help us, you know, identify the routes that are actually feasible. And so ultimately, the reason why everything isn't on this map, right, is that we know that resources are limited. So we'll have to make decisions and the most effective way we have to make decisions in order to effectively use the limited resources and of course, time and staff capacity, and of course, funding are all of those constraints that we're considering. But the physical constraints, among others, that, that we think about when we're evaluating a trail route include things like topography, floodplain, as well as other physical constraints in the environment. If the trail route was recommended, was identified outside of the study area, it's, it's not one that we typically included. So we're not trying to plan for expansions of the national forest trail systems. We're, we're focusing on Clarkdale. Whether, if there is a private property owner that we know is maybe unwilling or just not interested in providing trail access on their property. If the proposed alignment was unsafe, if it doesn't serve a connective purpose, essentially, if it's a trail to nowhere. And we're also always thinking about what provides the greatest public benefit. So again, knowing that resources are limited, it's important to identify if there is a community benefit to justify spending public funds. So these are all of the, these are sort of the things that we're considering when we're deciding what makes it onto the map and what doesn't. Okay, so now that you have an understanding of how we got to the preliminary routes map, I want to just quickly give an overview of the types of pathways and trails that are represented on that map. So I believe you all received a copy of this document, but the proposed system, at least as of now, is suggesting a mix of facilities that include both on-street and off-street infrastructure for multiple types of, of users and modes. So this started as a trails plan, right? We've been referring to it as a trails plan, but what we're really looking at is that this is a connectivity plan. So that includes identifying places where on-street facilities like bike lanes, sidewalks, and multi-use paths are needed. So we're proposing at this point eight pathway or trail types. And these are classifications that have associated design standards with them. And so it sort of helps set the expectation between.
Yep. Sorry to interrupt.
Can't, yeah, we're just having a hard time catching everything. At least some of us are. So I'm wondering, so can we turn down the volume? Can we just stop for just one second and see if we can get it? Can you turn it down? This end?
Yeah.
Oh, actually, just a little bit.
Do you want to try this? Need to read to?
There's a file. Good morning. Well, how good a person were you? I'm just asking for a friend. You got any family? That's a real quick.
One of them.
I did, you didn't answer, and I texted him, he didn't answer, so.
Well, we'll see. No, we don't have full box stories, but that guy's not been. He hasn't, I don't think he's been any problem, so I'll see.
Taylor, can you go ahead and speak again?
The last time is.
Yeah, how does this sound? Testing, testing, one, two, three. Is that any better?
What, like, this is my brain. What if something happens and it doesn't work?
Yeah.
Then we're live.
Okay, can you speak again? We couldn't hear you at all that time.
Or B and B.
No, that makes sense. It'd probably get a just give a check once we.
Yeah, and like I said, this probably hasn't been tested. No, we didn't even know we had it on. No.
Yeah, and realistically, I mean, you could go test it, but having somebody tag it wouldn't make it.
Taylor, can you try speaking again? We couldn't hear you at all there.
Yep. Test, test, one, two, three. Can you hear me now?
That's right. Do you know where the rice is? In the garage?
Okay, can you hear us, Taylor?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we can't hear you. Give us a minute.
Watch them.
Everything's working. Very sense.
Yeah, all the smoke detectors off. Every higher, higher. When did you, did something get turned?
She's muting herself.
It was sad.
So we turned it to monitor.
And if I can, just. You know.
So that's fine. Yeah, no, also. So we did, we came down.
Like, at one point, I'm just like, yep.
Yeah.
I don't know. I did think about maybe if I end up talking to her.
Of course. Yeah.
Like a, you know, like mentor.
Yeah, she wants to do interview prep. I don't.
Taylor, can you say something again?
Yeah, can you hear me, Cheryl?
It seems like you're muted and we didn't change any of ours. So give me just a second.
I'm not, I'm not muted. Can you?
Why we can't hear you at all?
Oh, like all these things, risk, yeah, what's your risk management? What's, you know, it's like, I mean, all people say. We do that. I did. As I'm right now, man, I'm not.
Carol, if you're still on, can you hear me?
Next week. You know, but, but I've talked again. Yeah, just working through things for so many people. They haven't.
A terrible. It's just like little things like.
I can hear you just fine, Taylor.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't my actual microphone.
Back on like.
Okay.
And in the audio Zoom testing, it can hear us. So I'm just not sure why we're not hearing our presenter. Yes, a little bit.
A little.
Hello, Tess?
Yep, I can hear you. Can you hear me? Testing, testing.
Why do we have some, what happened? Something happened?
Yeah. In good shape?
Well, you know.
Check, check one, two. Do you hear me in Town Hall?
Okay, Taylor, did you hear? We're gonna try it a little differently. We're gonna just give you a call and then have you on speakerphone on Joni's phone because we think the audio will be clearer that way anyway, given our speaker challenge. So she's calling you now.
Okay. So.
I may be so.
This is now that Carol Johnson can't hear me because my audio is only connected to phone call.
Chat with her. I have you, I have my phone in front of the speaker.
Okay. Maybe she.
Carol, can you verify that you can hear us?
I can hear you and I can hear Taylor.
He didn't take a leave, yes.
I mean, he's still.
Yeah. Don't see that she's responded in the chat yet.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, it's like, it's just, it's just so funny. So silly.
The lights confusing.
Can now better? In the chamber?
There's a, a name for it.
Drafting.
Um. Okay, well, that, does this sound better? Good enough?
That is better.
Okay. I don't believe she can. I also maybe some members of the board could speak. I'm not sure I'll be able to hear that for Q and A, so I may need you to, for any discussion to like relay that conversation.
Okay. I think I go for it.
Okay. And this has been recorded, so at least we can refer back to that. Um, okay, so I was presenting the proposed eight pathway or trail types. In the plan, these include, that we're proposing, they include a multi-use path, which is similar to the concept that the town already has along Broadway. Signed bike route, which directs cyclists to low-stress streets. Yield roadway, which is even lower stress rural road that can accommodate cyclists and pedestrians with shared roadway traffic. Connector trails, which would be trails like the Mescal Wash Trail. Nature trails, which are volunteer maintained and supported. So an example of this is the Crystal Springs Trail. The big streams trail. And we've also included the concept for a potential rail with trail concept specifically related to the Bonatz Trail, potential northern extension. Um, specifically related to the Bonatz Trail, potential northern extension. Uh, and then finally, bike lanes and sidewalks are also included in the proposed pathway types, which are of course already. There's plenty of precedent for that in Clarkdale already. How is this sounding to everyone? Should I keep going?
Yeah, what trails were for that bike lane? Oh, what trails were for the bike lane?
Is this? Should I continue or are you?
Second half, what trails were for the bike? From her list.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
What trails were her bike leads from the list? She was going.
Um, so, uh, I'm not looking at that at the moment, um. On my screen, but we all get to the map. Yeah, so those are designated on the map in which. Um, okay. All right. Um, but actually that is a great segue because that is what I want to pull up now is that preliminary alignment map. So I'm going to stop sharing this PowerPoint and I will pull up the map. So just give me a moment. Okay, so you all should be seeing this, the online interactive version of the preliminary routes map. Um, so we organized the system or the proposed option to choose systems. Um, so those include the. Uh, near-term system. And these are projects that prioritize connectivity in the immediate future. And then we've also identified a proposed long-term build out. Which includes more recreational trails in more challenging effort. Um, that role that could require projects that may require things like bridges. So to answer your question, so the. Bicycle routes are, um, sorry, I was, I was mixed up. Orange is pedestrian, but bicycle routes are pink. Um, and so the map doesn't identify whether that is a bike lane or, um. Like a bike route or a shared pathway, but those are details that, um, if you click on. The. Uh, on the project, on the line, then it tells you more details about what type of. Um, and that's also information that we would spell out. Um, one feature I like to call your attention to is what we're calling the Clarkdale spur of the Verde Valley Circle Trail. And this is represented in this, um, sort of green transparent buffer that goes around, uh, the proposed route. So the, the Clarkdale spur of the VCT is comprised of multiple different, um, trail or projects. Misses, um, to create that spur. Um, and then you probably also noticed to the west, um, the proposed trail extending proposed alignments for a trail. Um, I could go into a lot of detail, but it might be more helpful or useful to you all if, um, you have specific questions, but you'd like to. Uh, like me to address or enter, um, or even comments. We are definitely interested in your feedback on these routes. Um, so before we move on to prioritization, I'll just turn it over to you all for any questions I can answer.
It would also be helpful if you could zoom in on the map. Because what we're looking at on our screen is fairly far away and so.
Oh, I'm curious, how do, oh, sorry, how would we know, uh, who, if it goes over private property? That was a very. Tough question. Please tell me.
Um, yeah, well, those are all, uh, in the near term. Um, do not follow, do not cover much private property. There are some. That triggers large land holding. Um, the, we don't have, um, parcels on this map. Um, it's, it's a really large data set that would sort of bog everything down. Um, but we have evaluated, um. In detail which private property are implicated. Um, and there's a separate effort as part of this, the process to reach out to many of those large planned owners. Um, to potential alignment are, are being proposed, so kind of one or other. Um, but I will say that the larger. Particularly has. Uh, greater implications for, for private property, um, and so which is why those are hard to find.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No other question.
No other question. Okay. Well, we will then switch to the, um, I'll show you your project prioritization results as a homework that we asked you to complete. Um, and. And I can switch back to this map as well if we wanna, if we have further discussion and you wanna zoom in and sort of explore. So let me just, at this point, I'll just switch back to the slides. Okay. Great. Um, okay. Okay, there we go. Thank you so much for your patience. Okay, so moving on to the project prioritization that we asked you to complete, um, so. You took a look at the map. There were a lot of lines on that. Um, so there's a lot to consider, but there are several of those. Projects or routes that the community identified back in the, um, as being really important. And so again, given the reality of limited resources, um, part of the purpose of this plan is to come out with a clear list of prioritized projects. Um, and so those are the projects that will best the community. So we asked you all to take a first stab at, uh, prioritizing those segments. Or those projects. Um, and your responses will be, uh, one of the very important. You know, pieces of data that we consider as we, uh, move through the planning process and develop what the final priorities of the plan will be. Um, so in addition to your priorities, we'll also be asking the public to say the exact thing. So we'll be considering. Um, what they have to say, and then we will also be strongly considering several prioritization criteria. Uh, we shared that with you as well, but those include things like financial viability. Um, does the trail project or, or bicycle or pedestrian project satisfy an immediate needs like addressing health, safety, or welfare issues? Um, is it benefit driven? So does it help the town complete, um, a project that's partially developed or, or even an extended existing trail project? Um, does it have a special significance to the community? Um, so maybe it contributes to balancing out. Um, the distribution of where trails are located so that there's geographic equity. Um, or does it satisfy connectivity, like fill, like filling a gap, right? Connecting two things where there's a gap in between. Um, and then we'll also be considering, uh, opportunity-driven factors. So if it is, um, a project that. Uh, maybe the circumstances are right to just pursue it. So it, um, allows the town to leverage resources or partnerships with other agencies. Um, so we'll be looking at, you know, where's the low-hanging fruit on all of those projects? So these are your results. Um, and again, I'll, I'll say thank you for taking the time to. You know, try to digest all of this information. It's a lot. Um, we realize that you all aren't equipped with, you know, the month and month of. Um, study that we have put into this and that's completely fine. Um, but we know that you all, you know, are, are very. Engaged in the community, um, and aware of the community's needs. So, um, we are, you know, definitely interested in wanting to hear what you all had to say, just what your sort of first instinct is in terms of. What is most important? So, um, this is how the results shook out. Um, so your, your top project, um, and this is an cumulative average, right? Of the way everybody. So your top project, um, was a multi-use path on Arkdale Parkway. So it's right here. That was, uh, B in the list. Um, the second highest ranked project was the South Broadway sidewalk, um, and bike lane extension. Uh, south to Cottonwood. And so that's a project that we know is planned. Um, and then third was a multi-use path on Main Street that would connect Clarkdale Drum School to Seminole Play Road. Um, so those were what emerged as top three priorities, um, from your ranking. Um, but I'm interested to hear, um, you know, sort of what stood out to you as you completed this exercise. Um, if you have any, you know, comments on the prioritization, maybe you care to share why you answered the way you did. Um, or even if you just have thoughts or comments on sort of how the whole experience went for you. Because like I said, we will be putting this out to the community and we want to, um, we want to improve on it, you know, if there's something that. Um, that can be improved upon based on your experience.
So Taylor, you can hear me through this mic, right?
Amy. Amy.
So. Without any, without any context on what these trails were, just the title. I mean, only having deep knowledge of what these reference to, there's no description about what they are, where they are, where they're going. So it's kind of like, oh. I guess I'll rank these. I know kind of where Broadway is. Maybe that's a good one.
Yeah, I.
School is.
You're gonna send this out to the public.
But if you don't know what Old Drum Highway Bike Route are. You can click on letter L or whatever, but. It just says Old Drum Highway Bike, you know, there's not like a. That I, I guess there, maybe I just missed where the like descriptions of these were in some meaningful way.
I missed it too, apparently.
Yeah, I think we were all.
We didn't have written descriptions. Um, we were relying on the map to show, you know, exactly where those go and, and then the. Mid parentheses, like it's a terminal of the route.
Yeah, and I, I think the challenge, I think the challenge, um, that I've, that I've heard from a couple of.
So if I click on D, this just says D. And it just says whatever D says over here.
Yeah, she's saying she just wants you to cross-reference on the map, but the map's not.
So it says extend Bonatz Trail South to Tuesday Road. So that's. I mean, if I just look at that, there's not, it's like, there's not a. It doesn't point to any of these lines. There's lines like all around that letter.
So there's a leader line, um. I guess maybe give you that to show up.
All right, you know.
There should have been just feedback, should have been like, there should have been a page for A, like a, like a map page for A, like. A map page for with. Yeah, this was, this was a fun project because I mean, honestly, I just picked things that were multi-use because that, I didn't. Yeah.
So do you, um, feel like we need to narrow this list when it goes to the community? Cause I think.
Oh, you can't send this, you can't send this to a community like this. No, it definitely.
What would, what, what would be?
I mean, it seems extensive, but I think you need to narrow it down to.
More Canyon Road Bike. Is that, is that from Tuesday Road to Bill Gray Road? There's gonna be a bike lane? Is it for half a mile?
Is it a new path?
Is it, is it a new path?
Like every, everything should be a full page with a map. We are from point A to B, extending it, changing the path, like it needs to be.
And what's already been started?
Yeah.
I mean, are we just finishing something that's already been started?
So I think.
Well, there was the one that goes in dead, regular open access to Tuesday National Monument and Dead Horse Ranch State Park has existed for 20 years. So what's different about that one that has already been opened through the?
I think it's. Open.
It's not.
Regularly.
It's not, there's some parts of it that are not efficient.
Hmm.
Okay. There's, yeah, there's trail. We can all go.
Oh, there's a gate that says welcome to the. Forest and everything else.
They have. It's the gate.
A new gate. Wow.
Yeah, and Tuesday, I guess there could be a ranger there asking you for your proof that you paid to get him.
Yeah.
Do you all, can I, I'll just bring some idea. Doing greater, um. I guess detailed, like separate pages or links. Um.
Picture.
To this. Do you think that the community would?
Well, how's, well, okay, first off, how's it getting sent out? That's the first question. How's it getting sent out to the community? Because that's gonna change how you format the survey. So if, if, is it gonna be?
So we'll be using the same format that you have created.
So you're gonna send it out via email?
So it will be, um.
So on a computer.
Shell has a promotional plan for that. So it'll be sent out in newsletters. It'll be posted via.
So if that's. If that's how you're, yeah, if that's how you're gonna do it. So basically, when you get this, everyone should have a link that takes you to a. A extensive explanation on. A map of where it is, the intention, what's already there. And like, and then each one you would click, so you would educate yourself on that, and then you would be able to prioritize. I think it's almost, I think my two, my two cents. This was awful and I would just make the people pick their first three or their first five. The categorizing in order is. Just, you're gonna lose people. Their attention, like their attention spans are not gonna be there. They're gonna click on the things that interest them, learn about it and go, my top three priorities are.
As long as they understand each one.
Yes.
Yes, I say the top three.
Cause if you're a bike user, then you're gonna say, these are the three important things as a bike user, and I don't care about four, three, or two, or whatever. And so those numbers don't end up being meaningful and so you get some false results from. Like, because you're like, well, I don't care to really sort these. I don't, I'm not gonna walk on any.
No, I'm, I just have walkers. So which ones do I walk? Those are my priorities.
Maybe that would be better. Which are most interesting, I don't know. But then also, we talked about bikes, dogs. Accessible, um, you know, like connection, these different categories. But maybe having those, these tagged in some way. So like this one is, this one is bikes and horses and dogs. Oh, okay, then that, then those would be the ones that I would vote for, cause I like those. Something like that, first from this list.
So we haven't designated necessarily all of the trail views at this point.
Yeah.
That's, that's another.
They're largely all multi-use, and so I think we could add a detail of like, what is the intended type? Um, because those types that I shared with you earlier do specify the, like, the user group. Um. But those are details we can add. Into that pop-up on the map.
Getting done or what?
Helpful feedback idea.
Are all these happening?
To, there, to be in the master plan?
They're all happening. It's just what order to do them. Is that what they're trying to say?
Cause this list does include the near-term.
Cause this list does include the near-term and long-term build-outs, right?
Right. These are all just near-term, or they are some long-term or long-term?
Some are longer. Well, I would do the near-term first and the long-term later.
Well, just by definition of now.
I think the challenge, Taylor, was that if you haven't, like, I, I get it. From looking at the map, because we've been out on the trails, and you have many conversations about it. But if you're looking at this for the first time. And you haven't been on those trails, or don't use those trails, but yet you wanna, you know. Research it as far as its viability, if, if you're being asked to, like, like the commission has been. And I think it was just a very difficult process for them to get through and because not knowing exactly. What was the designation for each trail on the map. So it, it was a little, um, it was difficult. We need, we need a field trip.
Do, does the group feel like this is something that would be like asking too much of the public, the community?
I think, I think it'd be, I think it'd be a waste of time.
Yeah.
Just the way it's set up. It has to be simplified. There has to be links. There has to be Google images of. Like I said, a Google image with the trail, like the trail on here. This is the intention. This is how many miles. It's a multi-use. This is what we have so far. This is what we're gonna do with it. It just needs more information. Like Ben was saying.
And if people don't have computers, how can we let them know this information? We have to have accessible.
It would be cool if you did an open house and you did poster boards and each one had its section, right? And just go, and then we, I, I think, I feel like, and I don't wanna say this. I feel like we need to take a step back and we need to reassess. And have a idea of what each intention is for, and know that, okay, here's this trail. It's this many miles. This is what's, or like, we have to have that, that block or that framework already and fill in the blanks. Before we even, and I feel like we need to come back at the next meeting and go, okay, here's the map for this. This is what it's doing. Okay, that one looks good. I, I just feel like right now where we're at. We're not gonna get true feedback.
We do have an open house in September, so that could be the place to, you know. We have some time to. You know. What are your thoughts, Taylor?
Well, yeah, we should discuss. I think the detail of what you're trying to simplify, but we also need to add a lot of detail. So that's, that's kind of like cheap contrast.
Yeah.
Um, the other challenge is. Uh, it's just, it's just, it's a normal thing to do, so I think.
And I think Taylor, I think. Yeah, and Taylor, I think, I think one of the biggest issues that you're coming up against is when you look at this. You see something. When we look at it, we don't know what we're looking at. So there definitely has to be that transition. From your ten-year experience brain and you see, you see wonderful colors and you see everything and we look at it and go.
The brain shuts off.
Yeah, that's like, oh, that's a blob. I have no idea what I'm looking at. So there definitely has to be from your brain down to the average person walking in here.
Okay. Do you think that, again, like. Is it asking too much, I guess, of the public to, to try to like. You know. Volunteer their time and energy, or do you think the community would be open to?
I don't, I don't understand your, I don't understand your question.
She's just saying, you know how much time it took you to get your head wrapped around, even, even with more detail.
Yeah.
It's, it's a big, is it too much in general?
Well, I think first thing is you, you divide this into immediate and later, separate into two, then you. Do your, what the paths are used for. You have a map and just some information, and then you say, pick your top three.
And make sure there's the details. So if it's a mile and a half, that may really be for somebody in ten miles, maybe.
Okay, hold on, hold on just a second. Beth is talking.
All right, any trails, please let people know, are we looking at a mile and a half trail or a ten-mile trail? And is there a restroom there? Basic information.
There are no restrooms anywhere.
There's plenty of restrooms everywhere. No, kidding.
So for the, for public feedback and response, I think your best bet would be at the in-person open house meetings where. You, Joni Shell, other people are available to answer questions on the spot versus this being a online. Where like what Jerry was saying, where you're, you're confused, you have nobody to ask questions to. So I think it would. Need to be in person for the public to best understand.
And people who are interested will come.
They'll come.
How many are long-term and how many are new? I only came up with two.
One of the challenges for me is that we already have short and long-term trails. These have all been identified as good trails that are possible and everything else, like, that would make more sense to me instead of a community source. Deciding this is the one we should do first, that the people who are doing the work in your department. I mean, and with the experts that you hired would say, this is our, this is our lowest hanging fruit, and that's the one we're gonna do first. And this is the one we're gonna do second. So these are the baskets. They're already sorted. These are the priorities. They're already done. I don't know that, you know, so we do this whole list and they say, our number one priority is gonna be. The trail to Jerome, and you know that's gonna be the most expensive and the longest term and the hardest. And then now we have people frustrated that we're not doing their number one priority. It would make more sense to me to say, these are the trails we've identified. Here's, here's kind of how we're gonna tackle them. We're in broad strokes, and then have that be the announcement, rather than, I mean, I just don't, to me. It doesn't, I, I see this, it's a great list. I see how they all connect. Good, you know, like I don't, what order they get done in, I think should be. Maybe a decision from the people who are gonna be doing that work and doing, cause they know, oh, well, this property owner's ready to sign that over today.
Right, and we did do that as a staff. We, we identified those, those trails along with Taylor. Um, but I think you're right. I, I'm thinking that um, the public, that we do. Instead of doing the, the um engagement out to the public. That uh via the league, that we just do the open house. And those who are interested, as you have, you have said, those who are interested will come and participate. And we've given plenty of chances for that participation.
I think the map is great. I think the survey is the part that's problematic. Because you're just inviting people to be frustrated that they're, you know what I mean? Like I, I would just, we've had this over and over.
Yeah, not involve the ones that are not going to get done right now. Just step those to the side for right now and narrow it down so that people don't. Their brains don't shut off when they look at it.
Are you hearing that too?
Just get rid of the ones that, the long-term ones for right now, so it doesn't muddy the waters.
Yeah, why, why vision?
Is there, you know, make it easier for them.
Yeah, Felicia, so. Joni's right. We did, we named myself and staff did with Taylor prioritization. But we didn't use the prioritization criteria, you know, in a very systematic way. But so I think to Ben's point, that's something that we should probably do. Um, and that could, you know, bring some of the long-term into near-term, honestly. Um, we don't know until we go through the exercise. And maybe to Ben's point, we could, you know, then after we've gone through the, the exercise of. Taking the trails and evaluating them relative to the prioritization criteria, can take those to the public. Saying this is what we, you know, based on the criteria, what we're.
Based, based on your preferences, this is the order we're gonna do them in, based on what, what's achievable.
Or is there any need to go to the public at that point?
What is?
Major decision.
This is the order we're doing it, you know, like.
Did you have a reason? Did you have a reason to send, to survey the public? Um, cause we've asked them a lot of questions up to this point.
Transparent in the process, and so it's a fine line to walk. And so, uh, that's, that's sort of like what we're trying to balance here. Once you have that, what we did in May, you have that first understanding of like, what is important to the community, um, and then. Yeah, there has, I've definitely worked on plans where the next engagement is not until the draft plan is presented. That does include all of that detail and all of that information. In a compelling document.
So my follow-up then to this is if we're treating that open house in September as a more informational. Here's what we've come up with here, how, here's how we're prioritizing. We will get feedback. So then what is the process? How, how will we incorporate that feedback in the process from that point going forward?
We would revise the routes if we, if that's the kind of feedback we receive. Um, we would revise anything we've developed today that the community, that isn't, you know, in line with what the community tells us.
Have paperwork, I would comment, like a comment, so somebody could fill it out after they were here and collect those. Reassess it down, see if anything is glaring that was missed or overlooked and move forward. I still think for the open house, like I envision like these on poster boards with, I, I still think that information's important. That here's the map of the place, here's how many miles here, and have like, you know, little stations and we all. If we're here, oh, this is the intention and just so it's a little more clear.
So are we leaving just the prioritizations? Has they been created here? This for, for next steps right now, are we going through this list, or are we just gonna refer to the outcome that we've already got here? Just for your informational purposes and to bring to the open house and saying, you know, this is what the Parks and Recreation Commission. You can take some of these out, but are we leaving this as it is? Are we?
I feel like they've already, I feel like you guys have already prioritized. You're just gonna reprioritize based on some different evaluations and then come back. And I feel like this. Is. Not being used right now.
Okay.
So we have minutes. Like, why are you being, like, what was in this list when I identified in May?
Like what people were drawing that day.
So to prioritize those, it's a combination of, yes, wanting to hear what the commission thinks. Wanting to, um. Know what's important to the public, but then it all go considering those. The street prioritization criteria, um, all of those things that staff has to consider when they're. So it's. It's not exactly a science, not a question, either. It's a sort of a blend of, of looking at all these different things and. Um, determining what is important. So, so final prioritization for the plan wouldn't happen until after we had the public to put. Uh, initially, I figured we were.
So basically, it's taking the pieces from staff, the interest of the commission as they've. As they've gone through the, the map and prioritized. I mean, they've prioritized. Already based on the homework that they did. I think maybe is it just a matter of looking at. What, with everybody now having their eyes on what was, what kind of came to the top and evaluating those top ones and deciding. Are those the, are those the, um. Uh, it's, does everybody agree on kind of how this looks? And then, and then we can take it back and take some of the top trails and develop. More information on that for the, for the community over the house. Does that? Am I on the right track?
That sounds good.
What do you think, Taylor?
Um, I, yeah, I think we're saying the same.
Yeah.
Letter B. This multi-use path as a top priority, the top priority. So we looked at that and say, okay, this is what the commission said, top priority. If we were to ask the public the same kinds of questions, and maybe it's a narrow list. Maybe it's only, you know, the top six that, that they're choosing from, that you all have, that are, that are your top six, and see how the public rearranges those. This, and see where, like, this particular project shakes out. Maybe it's at the top, maybe it's at the bottom. Uh, but we also then consider those prioritization criteria, and one of those criteria is financial viability. So we'll be developing cost estimates for all of the near-term projects. And so these are things that we, that are likely feasible within the next ten to fifteen years.
Right.
Um, and so of course, cost is always a factor, right? So. Like that, that's how that, that analysis would go with like one particular. Trail. And so then we would decide based on what the commission said, what the community said, what the cost is, what are all these other factors? Is there um a willing landowner? Is there um an agency with a grant that would be a perfect match for this particular project? And we consider all of that information and determine what would be, what the town should prioritize.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
Um, so just piggybacking on, um, uh.
Commissioner Kramer's comments about, you know, the fact that we're presenting trails.
That. Um, the feasibility is from either a building or a maintenance perspective or, or whatever. Needs to be, I, needs to be considered by staff. And um, I, I almost, yeah, I sort of feel that we're, we're working backwards. If we're, if we're having the public continually tell us what trails they're wanting to, um. You know, what they want, um, but yet we, we may not be able to provide it, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if the feedback we're getting is they want the, that, they want the 10th Street Bridge that goes down to the train. It doesn't matter. At some point, it doesn't matter. Like, I don't, this is the same thing with a lot of programmatic things. It's like, these are the things we can actually do. We can actually do a concert at the park.
Right.
We can't actually do, you know, whatever.
Well, I mean.
Jet skiing in Pexley.
Right, and initially, I mean, we wanted the whole spec, the whole spectrum of what everybody wanted.
But I think you send this survey out to people, that's, we're gonna have a bunch of frustrated people.
Yeah.
Not.
But we did that, but we already did that. Right, we had our focus groups.
They've already given their answers.
And we had it in the house. And so it is another, um, it's another, you're gonna be productive. Felicia has something.
Well, yes, someone question I had was for the commission was, based on what you've said. Is, do you feel that the results that Taylor presented are valid? Do you think that you had enough in for me?
No.
No, what, what results? This is the list?
Yeah.
I have no idea. I mean. What they are.
Is it, do we have to, do you have to do the open house in September? Or is it even?
No.
Necessary.
No, we don't have to.
People are not ready. And we would need to be there to answer questions, and how can we answer questions if we've never been to these?
Right.
Well, like Felicia said, I mean, if you use the information from staff and Felicia and then use this information and kind of, I mean, I feel like it would be something that your group could decide if they are, you know, looking at ours, even though ours is fairly uninformed.
So instead of asking the public, for public, um, like prioritizing, we just say, this is what we have and
Yeah.
You know, tell us what you think.
Hey, here are five projects we're excited about. It's Cartel Parkway Multi-Use Path from 11th Street to Smith My Road. Here's how far it is. This is what it'll look like.
Sorry.
Yeah. Just explaining what they, what these are, and this is what we're doing, and this is what they are. I think that would be fine, you know? If they all want to come back to the lounge again.
If our survey lines up with what you are, guys are determining is feasible and whatever, then that's great. I wouldn't say, what do you think to them.
I'd be more interested in knowing if, oh, hey, you guys have these number one and two, but staff had these as number one and two, let's talk about that because then it's the commission understanding better. Oh, it's because it's because there's some huge challenges with letter H or whatever. Like that would be, that would make more sense to me.
I do like the idea of doing a low-hanging fruit first to, and then do an opening and it shows people look what we're doing and maybe, you know, kind of put it in there like that. This one's going to be done quick. This one might take a little longer, but you keep people engaged. Where if you pick one that's going to take a year, you know?
And you could invite them to say, hey, if you want to be part of these longer-term projects because you're a horse person or a dog person or whatever, walk person. Time out.
I just want to say that we've had the same people come to almost again, meeting and we'll see the same people when we have open house. And they're needing to be in these things now because they get drawn on it. They think some of it will make more sense and if we incorporate some of what you guys are recommending, I think it'll be really helpful. We also have a list that, um, I printed and I put fifty-five each on our twenty-twenty survey. And at that time, we asked the public, like, what you want to do on trails. We asked them in just a very straightforward way, what kind of trail opportunities do you want to speak? On the back of your page list, like what they said, you know, that they want to walk. But then they go to, that's how they kind of wanted to use the trail, what title in general. And so the public seemed to respond really well to those sort of questions. And we know, if we feel like we can trust this information, we could really use this to inform some of what we're trying to do too, because the public already told us at that time, you know, that they really want to be trails that connect to the neighboring communities. Trails that connect to the federal and state lands around them and are thirteen. It includes trails that take all of those terms into account and that's part of why they're on the list.
And their presentation at open house could include this, this letter hits all these things, like in the top bird, you know?
Okay.
So, um, I want to feedback, Taylor. Yeah, yeah, let us, let us, um, I think we should be tomorrow based on the feedback that we have. And give a strategy for, um, be looking at our strategy for going, for going forward. Um, did you have, did you kind of think more in screen, yes, that you wanted to go through, do you still want to do that?
I'll highlight sort of what our, our next steps are. It, it's just adequate to see the full screen with this quickly. Um, like I said, we, we want to engage the public in September and you all have provided really, um, really helpful feedback on how we do that. So we'll, we'll be tweaking this process, but, um, after that, we will shift into, um, more of a, a planned development stage. And so that's going to be, um, you know, developing those cost estimates and looking at, um, you know, how many easements would it take to achieve this particular, uh, project and those kinds of things and working with staff. Again, then to do that final prioritization. Um, and, and we'll be putting all that information into, um, a draft plan. Um, and our target for having that document is, uh, is December. Um, and so that's when we would, um, then publish that draft back to you all, to the public um, at the same time to, to review. And I think this is sort of what you were describing to look at everything, um, as we present sort of the argument for the projects and for, um, how they're prioritized and then ask for feedback on that, um, with all of that, that detail in hand. And so, um, that is where we're headed with the project. Um, and ultimately, we, our timeline is to have the plan completed and adopted, um, by the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. Um, so that's, that's all I just wanted to sort of give you an overview of the direction we're headed in. Um, but I can, I can answer any other questions as well. Um, Jerus, let's, let's feedback and it's very helpful.
Uh, I, I just want to, um, add or, um, say, Taylor, and, and let this mission know um, how much work you have put into this and, uh, you and Felicia and the ground truthing and going on and looking at the actual feasibility of some of these trails. And, um, and Taylor has just done a tremendous job for us in getting all that together. And we appreciate her so much. And her, um, expertise, um, it's just that matter of us, uh, of the, of, um, breaking it down to something that, that everybody can understand of the people that we, that we want additional feedback from. And go all work together on, uh, kind of, um, taking a step back and looking at taking on your comments into, uh, account and come up with a, um, a way forward. I think it'll be great. I think, yeah, your feedback has been important. You know, we need, we need to know what's, you know, um, what's hard, what, what will be hard to the public and, and also just kind of taking it, um, of what it, you know, what it what it is that we're trying to, what we've already done, what we know and what we need to, uh, what we need to do to get it to the next, to the next step. So thank you, Taylor.
Yeah, thank you all for spending this, this hour and a half tonight. Um, this is really important and really helpful to us. So I really appreciate your time.
We're sorry for the, uh, technical difficulties. This is by far the weirdest meeting I've ever run. But we appreciate your patience with us.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you to the commission for bearing with us.
Thank you.
All right. I will sign off and have a good evening. Thank you again.
We'll touch base with you tomorrow.
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right. That's a lot of information. It's good. Um, so anybody want to say any other comments or have any other questions before we wrap up this item? I have a quick question. Um, this upside down, um, the planned, the continued, um, pedestrian way into Cottonwood.
Yes.
That's, so that's part of the trails. That's not a separate thing already and where?
It already is.
Okay.
But we want to show it as a viable, uh, connecting, um, resource.
Okay.
And so we want to include it in the plan, um, because I mean, it's a base out that. So it's nice to have that low looking, that's really a low key, like already.
Yeah, okay.
Already processed. So that doesn't have to be decided on. That's being paid for like a resource that does not affect anything.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm Bruce May, he's our community development director, said that this plan will help inform the transportation plan. And so our connections are on here, all of these.
Okay.
Um, that it will help to put towards, you know, the two plans working seamlessly together. And that's one that we want to make sure mine's up, it's right, um, going all the way down to.
A great job, everybody, and your comments and feedback. I think, you know, it's really important for us to have that going forward and make sure we get, get what we, what we, what we need. And like you said, we want a plan that we can actually do something with. And so if we're just, if the public's the only piece, which we know it's not, but we've got to keep it. We got to keep it where we can.
Yeah, it reminds me a lot of when we talked about programmatic stuff, when we were trying to figure out what we wanted to put resources towards. I mean, same idea.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right. Future agenda items. I know that you will give us a lot, plenty of updates and we'll probably talk about the two park projects in Halloween. Does anybody like to add anything, request a future agenda?
Um, I don't know, me and Shell, we're talking about this. I don't know if it's really agenda item. I don't even know. But so, um, we rescue a lot of people out of the river. That rescue is a loose term.
Okay.
But, um, I don't think people really understand when they put in at Tapco, how long and what they're about to go over and the rivers changed dramatically. Like we had, we've, we rescued two people last, two groups of people last week that were on rafts when it, and it started pouring. They had no idea it was going to take them two and a half hours. I've had to give people lights, like we pull people out all the time and we take them to their car, which I'm fine with. People are usually super cool. But we were talking, I don't know, if you put something like, hey, if you only have an inner tube, there's a lot of rocks, there's a lot of shallow areas, your tube might not make it. Or, hey, if you're just floating, you're looking at a two to three-hour window. I mean, I don't know. First off, I don't know if people are even going to read it because if they're already just jumping in willy-nilly and don't care, because they obviously didn't talk to anyone prior anyway. I don't know. It's just something to like, not that we necessarily need to put it anywhere, but maybe just brainstorm and think of something that might help people make better decisions.
Maybe we could just have a, of, on one of the future meetings, just a thing about the signage that exists. And if we have any recommendations for changing.
Yeah. And it's very good for recreation signage.
Wrap, sign, and review and discussion.
And, um, and then I can also give you an update, that, that time on some other things that are going on.
That sounds good.
But good. Thanks for bringing that.
Okay. Well, then I will, without any opposition, I will adjourn the meeting. Would you have to take a vote? Okay. Or I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All fair?